Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to bring out. I'm getting an echo here. I'd like to bring out a session, six p.m. work session to order. If you choose to do so, I ask that we stand for a moment of silence, a prayer and a pledge of allegiance, please. Dear Father, who come today, we ask that you come in the midst of us as we begin our meeting to discuss the business of our citizens. We ask for your unwavering and understanding commitment to us that we do your will in all things, we pray. Amen. For the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated, thank you. Just gonna pause for just a minute to make sure that we have our technical difficulties corrected. Is that better? Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the board, we have a lot of business to take care of tonight on our work session here, so I will go ahead and begin. Act number two, which is the Department of Health Reports. We have Corporate Extension Report that is written by Director Christopher Smith. And if anyone have anything to say about that, I'll just move along from there. Board of Elections, they're performing a ball as a written report. Does anyone have anything extra to say about that? And moving along to Economic Development Report, Ms. Charlotte Duncan, interim director, and hers is in person. So Ms. Duncan, you have the floor.
Sure, thank you. Good evening. You have my report for April in front of you, and I'm not going to touch on everything, but I do want to touch on a few highlights. So, under Business Assistance, we did kick off with NC Commerce, the CERI program that you signed a resolution for us to participate in, and so this is the, CERI stands for the Community Economic Recovery and Resiliency Initiative. And so, we are actually the first participant in our Prosperity Zone, the North Central Prosperity Zone in North Carolina, and we are the first county to participate instead of just municipalities. So, that's getting kicked off and more to come on that. We have continued to work with the Vance Granville Community College Small Business Center and on our, on the 19th Annual Small Business Summit, and so you have a flyer in front of you for that. And this year's theme is Act Alternatives and Legacy Farms, and so this is going to be held at Seven Springs Farms and Vineyard in Ridgeway. And you can see the speakers that we have lined up. It'll go from about 10 to four that day, and registration is May 10th, so we hope that, we hope that you can come out and join us. I think that there's probably a benefit for folks even if they're not related to agricultural production or agritourism, so we'd love to have small business owners from the community out that day. I have been continuing work with Frontier Natural Gas, looking at some of their strategic efforts throughout the county in terms of utilities, and so they are gearing up to do a natural gas line expansion in Soul City down Liberation Road to the Purdue Hatchery. So you also have a flyer in front of you. They will be conducting a community meeting. We want to thank the Soul City Volunteer Fire Department for allowing them to have that, and it's a chance for residents to come out on April 26 p.m. to discuss that project, to discuss the extension and what it might look like for residents to, along that line, extension to get natural gas service at their homes, because they're hoping to serve current residential areas as well as any future ones that might be happening there in the community as well. And just to continue, a couple other things. Under Projects and Partnerships, you approved us joining the FTA TOD, that's the Transit Oriented Development Grant with NC DOT's Rail Division, and so we are getting that paperwork squared away for that grant to work on the S-line with the 13 other communities along that proposed rail corridor. And then the last thing, just want to bring to your attention, Vance Granville has started a Regional Workforce Development Advisory Board, and we had our first meeting since the last time I saw you. And that, that's made up mostly of economic development directors in the area and a few other workforce folks, so hope to do some good partnerships there. And that's it for my report unless you have any questions.
Okay, Board of Commissioners, any questions? Ms. Duncan, I would ask you, you would expand with, where were the, the rail system again? Can you just tell me just a little bit more about that?
Sure. So, so last meeting, if you remember, you approved us participating in the NC DOT Federal Transit Administration Transit Oriented Development Grant. And you approved a grant match of up to $40,000 to participate in that study, and what that is, is the feasibility study of a station along the S-line, and so we have received the contract recently and are processing that and getting our payment processed. And so, that steering committee will hopefully have its first meeting in the next month or so. Yep. It's, I was trying to be quick and think of a rail line. Full steam ahead. We're full steam ahead on that project. Yeah.
Okay. All right, good job. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, if there is anything else concerning those topics, we're going to move along to item number three, and this is a considered approval of the Resolution of Support for Hollowasaponie Tribe Federal Recognition Efforts, and then together by our county attorney, Mr. Hassan Kingsbury. Ms. Kingsbury, you have the floor, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, all members of the board. This resolution is in support of the Hollowasaponie Tribes' recognition for federal their efforts to become federally recognized as a tribe. I've been in contact with their attorney, Mr. Richardson, and we have come up with this resolution and would like for the board to vote in support of it and for the chairman to sign the sign.
Thank you, Ms. Kingsbury. Ladies and gentlemen, have you had the opportunity to read this resolution? I do need a little verification. Can you ask us to take action on that? Yes, sir. So, ladies and gentlemen, the board, this is going to be an action item for vote tonight. Ms. Kingsbury is asking us to take, take some action on that. Are you comfortable with the wording that Mr. Kingsbury has given us? Absent of any comment, I'm going to take that as a yes. So, the board, entertain a motion for approval, please.
You have a question?
Commissioner.
I have a question in regards, I'm sure we all have received, you know, the emails in regards to questioning what the impact is really going to be for Warren County. I know the tribe has tried, you know, in the past for many years to gain the federal recognition. But can we just get a clear understanding what that means to Warren County?
I know that they are currently recognized under the state and local model, which gives the tribe certain benefits and privileges statewide. A federal recognition gives them greater access to more federal benefits. We have several federal recognized tribes in the state of Cherokee, and then a couple of others that have not had federal recognition, but they'll be able to do more economically. How it impacts us as a county. One, you know, they are within our borders, and so some of the benefits that they get probably would trickle down to us, but I can talk to Chief Richardson and ask more specifically if you'd like to. I know they have just made in the process, they need support from us as a governing body and also Halifax County, and they reached out to other counties in order for them to get the recognition better. But I can find out more information. It would be more of a benefit to them in particular than to us that I know of offhand, so.
And I just want to make sure that these efforts are different from what was done before. I know you're saying to have the resolution to be able to roll up, I guess, to the federal government. Like, what was missing before, what was not given as far as information-wise before?
I can't answer that. They just reached out to us and said that they would need our support in order for their application to the federal government. They weren't denied before. I don't know why in particular, but I can reach out and ask them a little more, but they would require, they required to get our support and help us, kind of in other areas that they are contingent to, so. I guess, what you're saying in essence, the more support that they have from the local level. It helps them to get the recognition. Yes. But I'm, forgive me, I don't know the last time they applied. It might have been before I got here, so I'm not sure why they would have denied it, no. In our meetings, we've met and we have voiced support for them in their efforts, and this is part of what they need from us.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I know that we approved the resolution as presented by Attorney Kingsbury. It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Hunt, seconded by Commissioner Baker, that we approve the resolution to consider just in support of the Hollowasaponie Tribe for federal recognition. Standing further discussion. Here now on the favor side. Post nate. Post is carried. Thank you very much. Item number four, ladies and gentlemen, is going to be American Rescue Plan Overview, and that is going to be presented by County Manager, Mr. Vincent Jones. It's Jones, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Chair, and for the board members, good evening as well. And this evening, I really wanted to take an opportunity to speak with you about the American Rescue Plan. So, as you know, last year, the county was the recipient of relief funds, the Coronavirus Relief Fund. So, we received funding that was awarded to the county as well as our municipalities in the county to help with the impact of the pandemic, which was new to us in 2020. And I just want to give you a brief update. So, we were able to use those funds to cover expenditures in our budget. Public safety was the bulk of them, which allowed us to realize some savings in our current budget. So, in actuality, you will see this notice from the state, and the Budget Office for the state, they have established a North Carolina Pandemic Recovery Office. And so, they provide guidance to communities in the state on how those funds can be used. We have to submit a plan to them of how we are going to use the funds, and then we also have to provide to submit monthly reports. But we are done with using those funds. We have used up what we received last year completely. But I just want to let you know, the deadline to use those funds has been extended to December 31st of 2021. But the good thing for us is now that we have completely used those funds, on March 11th, Congress passed the American Rescue Plan. It is the second phase of pandemic relief, and just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that, because we will have two different sets of funding. We are finished with our CERI funds, and so we will not be able to, we won't have to manage two different sets of funds. And in fact, the Pandemic Recovery Office is encouraging counties to go ahead and expend your first pot of funding, so you won't have to worry about managing two sets of funding. Go to the next slide. So, as I mentioned, in December of last year, 2020, there was an Appropriations Act that offered funding to the state of North Carolina, and then on March 11th of this year, it was the American Rescue Plan. And as you can see, there is approximately $15.5 billion going to North Carolina. Of that $12.3 billion is intended to be direct payments. So, what that means for us, you can actually dial down, Warren County will receive a direct payment of $3.8 million. Can go to the next slide. So, while we will receive our direct payment of $3.8 million, the Pandemic Recovery Office is still asking us to coordinate where we came in with other state agencies. Different state agencies like the Department of Transportation, the Department of Education, for example, they all will have different funding streams that we may be able to apply for, that we can actually use to leverage the $3.8 million that we are receiving directly. So, this really is a significant effort to make sure that counties are receiving support, because we may have suffered from decreased revenue during the pandemic. And I know one area where we have noticed a trend with our revenue being less than what we forecasted has been with our property tax revenue, which is our most significant source of revenue. But in other areas like sales tax, we have seen, fortunately, some level of increase.
Yes. While you're continuing, so is this money going to be divided between the municipalities like it was before, or is this county dollars to manage?
These are county dollars. The municipalities will get their own direct payment as well.
So Warren County will get $3.8 million or so?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, within 60 days from March 11th, we're going to get half of it, and then 12 months later, we'll get the other half. So, some of the things that we need to consider are, you know, what are our priorities for this funding? You know, what is our capacity to manage this level of funding? And unlike the previous allocation we received where they gave us six months or seven months to use it, we will have until December of 2024 to use these funds. So, it will be a multi-year stream that we can use. So, the Pandemic Relief Office, like I said, provides guidance, and they have just suggested when we're coming up with our plan, that we look at some guiding principles, and they have specifically highlighted equity, sustainability, and efficiency, and those are all those guiding principles that we need here for Warren County and our organization. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We do have time. We don't have to rush and do this, and so we will be working over the summer to develop a plan and bring back to you to how we use these funds. So, we're going to handle this outside of our normal budgeting process. All right, this slide really just shows across the state how different sectors of our economy were impacted by the pandemic. And as you can see, the majority of them experienced loss, and government is one of those areas that actually experienced a drop in employment as well as revenue. The other issue that I wanted to bring to our attention is small business and the impact on small businesses. We know that the pandemic was tough on our small businesses. Many were unable to make it through the pandemic. We have seen some of our businesses in the county closed as well, but many of them were able to take advantage of programs like the Paycheck Protection Loans, and hopefully, they were able to use that to help them weather the pandemic. And Ms. Duncan, through Economic Development, does have access to information that shows, in fact, our Warren County businesses, nonprofits, were taking advantage of the Paycheck Protection Program. So, this last chart really just shows you the different programs that we have been receiving funding from over the past year. It started off with the CARES Act in March of 2020. Then the year ended with the Appropriations Act, which is the federal budget, and then now we have the American Rescue Plan. So, you have this deck of slides in your packet, and see if you, and I just want to let you know that that information was there and available after you've had the chance to review it in more detail. If you have some additional questions, please just let us know. Maybe we'd be happy to answer those questions for you. But this last slide I'll end with, just really shows you right in the middle of the slide, some of the eligible uses for this stream of funding. And again, it's similar to the Coronavirus Relief Funds. We're supposed to be responding to needs that we have, whether they're public safety or negative economic impacts due to the pandemic. This one specifically talks about providing a premium pay to employees as an option, and even also allows revenue reductions to be addressed as well. All right. And the last line has to do with infrastructure investments, so specifically calls out water and sewer projects as well as broadband projects. All our needs that we have here in the county, and those funds can be used to supplement our efforts with those types of projects. And that concludes my comments on the American Rescue. Any questions?
I do. So, I know we have time. We have quite a bit of time, you know, to decide what we're going to do with the funds that we're receiving. But being that Warren County is getting like the $3.8 million, I think it would make a lot of sense for us to try to go after things where we can, like you say, leverage our dollars, especially with the infrastructure piece. We know we have the water treatment plant. We're trying to do that expansion. So, because that's a partnership, if that's something that we're going to use some of the monies for, it seems like, especially for Warren County, who would talk to municipalities and say, hey, let's strengthen our dollars, let's use, you know, would you guys consider using some of your money? But again, that's the collaboration piece, and even in regards to broadband, you know, because we're trying to grow it here in the county. We know that it's needed, especially with people either working remote or students working remote, as well as attracting small businesses or businesses in general. If we can get some of those municipalities to say, hey, yeah, we want to increase, you know, or make it a little bit sooner that we're able to implement doing this, I think it would be wise for us to have lots of communications with them.
Yeah, I have taken notes on that, Commissioner Pierce, and just wanted to let you all know that we have actually applied for some grant funding. Ms. Duncan was able to complete that on Monday, so we have applied to Congressman Butterfield's office, so they receive funding, and so through the Appropriations Act, they're called, you know, they usually be called, they're usually are called federal earmarks. We have applied directly to the him to support our broadband project, and so we have money in our budget to support broadband. If we can get additional money, then it will allow us to do a much, a much more robust broadband implementation. So, we're trying to use other resources to help us expand what we were going to do, so understood?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just think that with this amount of money, we should, I think your approach is correct by taking our time and basically putting together a plan that speaks to the, the benefit of the citizens of Warren County. I do know that, I think, when it comes to broadband, I think the president is also looking at those infrastructure needs, so I think that we should be a little bit more cautious on how we take these local funds, because there may be other revenue sources coming down through the federal government, maybe through the state government that are aiding broadband, and we don't have to use our allocation that we've just received. You know, to do that, we can actually basically, you know, do something that's basically is something that Warren County has never seen before, you know, because of our efforts, ladies and gentlemen, the board, in the past years, we've left ourselves with a good fund balance. County manager's been managing our revenue and expenditures properly, and we have a, a strong base to actually launch from. This right here only aids in our ability to do something that's never been done for the citizens of Warren County here locally. And, but I like your approach, Mr. Jones, through the course of the next few months, getting together a plan in here, which your staff comes up with as far as recommendation.
Yes, sir. Do you know if the water department had a significant loss in revenue due to people not being able to play the water bill?
I will get you the exact figures. We, we, we did have some of our residents take advantage of the moratorium on cutoffs, but many of them have actually worked with public utilities to come up with payment plans, and so we will provide you an update of what that impact looks like.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, if there are no further questions? You can move on, Mr. Jones. Okay. All right, our next item, we have called this one an organizational update. We have, an organization is changing and we have a lot going on. And I wanted to take some time to talk to you about some of the key issues that we were facing. And so one of the issues that we are facing is the county is the provider of emergency medical services to our residents through our EMS department. Unlike the fire departments that have taxing authority, we also have a volunteer emergency rescue squad, the Warren County Rescue Squad, that helps us in our response on the border with Halifax County and covers much of the lake area. They are a volunteer rescue squad. They notified Halifax and myself last month that they were having some challenges as a volunteer rescue squad. And so I have asked them to come to speak to you this evening so we can publicly discuss the concerns that they have. Because we as an organization provide through our county employees emergency medical services. And so we are who would have to step in if there was concerns with the rescue squad and they weren't able to continue providing that service. So I wanted to make sure you all were aware of that so we could try to address that problem over the next month. So Ms. Hilliard, if you could come on up and talk to the board about the challenges the rescue squad is facing. And when she's done, they will talk to you directly about some of the issues we are facing as an organization directly. You can go to the mic. Yes.
Can everybody hear me? Good afternoon. I'm Teresa Hilliard. I am treasurer of the Warren County Rescue. Our captain, William Rodwell, is back there waving at you. I've been treasurer now for going on about eighteen years with the rescue squad. We actually became in existence in nineteen sixty five, total volunteer. This facility, well, this organization was volunteer completely up until two thousand and seven. And one of our members became the first full-time paid employee of the rescue squad. At that time, Halifax County placed a paramedic twenty-four seven in our back door. We provide the facility, the house, the utilities, the equipment, the supplies needed. Halifax County provided that personnel. So up until that point, we filled the void with volunteers. About twenty sixteen, it became necessary for us to start paying weekend staff. So on Saturday and Sunday, we would pick up and pay part-time people, EMTs, to come and work. That's worked out fine up until this January. We got to where no one was willing to give their time to volunteer for our service. We have a large area. We actually go across the lake up into the northern parts of the lake as far as Jack's Landing. I don't know if any of y'all know exactly where that is. But that is kind of on the way to South Hill if you're going to go by water. And it takes a good twenty minutes for us to reach that point from our building, which is located on Enterprise Road in Littleton. Now, because we're right there on the county line, we have a contract with Halifax County. They provide the paramedic service. We provide all the other. We do do some in Halifax County all the way to approximately Thel, Thel one fifty-eight. From Littleton to Airly, we cover that. The whole southern part of the lake area is ours. Then we come west as far as Bonn. So we have a big block here that we need to cover. And with the lake becoming more prosperous as it is, that is getting harder to do with the personnel that we've got. So in January, we had to pay full-time. Well, we have one full-time, but we have filled in the hours necessary with paid staff. So now we're fully paid twenty-four seven. That has cost us an additional monies that we had not been, had not allocated for. And that money had come out of our personal accounts as far as money market, any stocks or bonds that we had, those were cashed in so that we could provide this service for our community. I'd hate to see our community go without this service. They depend on us so much, just like they depend on our police officers, our sheriffs, our firemen. They know everybody by name. I mean, they will pick the phone up and call you. Can you come check me? I'm having a blood pressure problem. These people depend on us. And I just feel so strongly about it would take so little money with the combined two counties, Halifax and Warren, to keep our doors open. At this point, we have approximately twenty thousand dollars left at our disposal. If we do not get more funded come the fiscal year July one, then we have no other choice but to close our doors. In looking at the cost that it would cost Halifax County, they would have to provide a new station with all new employees and with all new equipment, as well as Warren County, unless they can absorb it with other stations that they have located within the county. I feel like that the growth that we are seeing, Halifax County, well, this is in Halifax County in Littleton City Limits. We have a senior living facility that will be opening May fourth. They have sixty beds that they're going to fill instantly. They are equipped for hunting. The rumor is, and I feel like it's only a matter of time, till the resort area or hotel or whatever it's going to be will be at the marina at Lake Gaste. That is dead center of our area, service area. Having that being said, we only have one truck, one crew that is on twenty-four seven. We have the equipment. We have the extra trucks. If sorry, we may, we'd be able to put on another crew. But right now, we're just trying to keep the one crew going for twenty-four seven. And in order to do that, we have anticipated that the monies that we will need to keep going is going to be approximately a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Now that is in conjunction with Halifax County. So Warren County, the way I understand it, Warren County picks up and pays one-third of what the call volume has been. Whatever the calls in Warren County amounts to that percentage, that is the money that Warren County pays to Halifax County for the service of their paramedic. All right, Halifax County would pick up the two-thirds. So the increase that we're asking would cost Warren County approximately forty-five thousand dollars annually. The increase to Halifax County would be about eighty-nine thousand annually. And this is something that we need to have on a yearly basis in order to keep our doors open and to provide the service to our communities. I know this is, well, it may be a lot of money to ask at one time. But then when you look at what we provide and the benefits that our area has to our to our constituents, then I think we really need to take that into consideration. And I do appreciate y'all taking the time to listen to us. Are there any questions about any of this?
Ladies and gentlemen, if there are any questions or comments? I, I just want to say that, of course, that is part of my district. And you all doing a great service. I've seen you in action. I've seen you step in action.
Thank you.
Really have. And I'm sure that we're going to take a good hard look at this and see, and Mr. Jones is probably already on it. Yeah, shaking his head. He's already on this thing to figure out what we're going to do in accordance and in sync with Halifax. Yes, yeah, it works because it is an interesting relationship. So, Mr. Jones, if you want to add anything to that?
Sure, thank you, Chair. I'm thinking, Ms. Hilliard, for coming and providing an update. Yes, and so this is a significant issue for us and so I wanted to make sure that we gave you some time to, one, become aware of it. We just became aware of it with the correspondence that was provided to Halifax County last month. And so I had spoken with Halifax County. I have been speaking with Halifax County and we are both under the same opinion that we want to try to address this in our upcoming budget with this funding, which will allow us to take some time next year to figure out how we can sort of permanently address this issue.
I guess that was part of mine. You into magic too, because you did Africa Dabble. Okay, my question is, y'all have been in the establishment for a very long time, nineteen sixty-five. And do you, do you have a crystal ball on how y'all want to address going further in the future with staffing? I think, I think that's what the issue is, is staffing.
Issue is staffing and money. Yes, money. My plan and talking with some of the other members, we feel that eventually, I don't know if it'll be this coming year, but maybe the year after, is to put on another full-time group so that we have two and not have to use Halifax County or Warren County as backup. We all do mutual aid where if trucks are out in Warren County and there's a call, they desperately need one, we will come into Warren County and fill, you know, fill that position. Halifax County does the same thing for us. So my thinking is with the increase of calls that we're going to get from the senior living facility, that we will need to put on a second truck that has to have two people. One has to be a paramedic. So we would have to employ another paramedic and another EMT. And that would be for twenty-four seven. So we're looking at just for this year, which does not include putting on another truck, we're looking at an increase of about sixty-seven thousand dollars in payroll. That's for twenty-four seven full-time people.
So you're getting away from the model of volunteering volunteers because I see that that was the case that you had to get.
We do not have volunteers. Up until January one, we were the last volunteer rescue squad in North Carolina. And beginning January, when we had to hire people, was, of course, I volunteered, but I'm not counted on the truck.
Yes, ma'am.
But as volunteer, but it's been difficult because we've tried so many years to pull it off just volunteers. And people now, it's so much that is required of them to get their certification. They don't have the time. They don't have the money. And a lot of them don't have the inclination to come in and help out the community, which is what we're actually doing with, is helping our community and our brothers and sisters.
Well, on behalf of the board, we really do appreciate you and your staff and everybody over there that's been volunteering as long as you have, providing a very needed service in that community and that area. So, so thank you. So like I said, we're going to be moving forward, county managers all have a plan together, working in with other, definitely be in touch with you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Hilliard. Thank you, Chair. And so as we move on to the other organizational development items, I just wanted to just take a moment to talk about the past year and how it has caused us to sort of refocus our efforts and look at how we provide services. And so while we have been able to rise to the challenge and continually provide service, it has highlighted some opportunities for us to address how we provide service. And so hopefully we will come out on the other side of this stronger as an organization. And so we're going to take a look at some of the things that are some immediate operational issues that we have as well as long-term sort of organizational changes that we can take a look at. And so that's why I want to include the rescue squad. But as you know, one of the first things I'll talk about with you are some key vacancies that we have. We have vacancies in a few of our key positions. The first being our EMS director, Mr. Pasco, will be retiring at the end of this month. Our EDC director position has been vacant for seven months. We also have received notice that our soil and water director will be retiring by the end of June. Our public utilities department, we have had our former director, Mr. Michael Robertson, filling in for us on a consulting basis. And then we also have in our office, the deputy clerk position as well. And so we have been making some good strides in getting these positions and recruited and hopefully well on our ways to getting them filled. And so for example, for EMS, I wanted you all to be aware that we do have a transition plan. We have received about ten or eleven applicants for the position. We'll probably interview four to five of them. But our transition plan for the end of the month is to have our existing staff be as interim director and interim EMS director. So Mr. Chris Peager, I have met with him and Mr. Pasco. And we will have Mr. Chris Peager, who named as our interim EMS director. And then Captain Tucker, who is our compliance officer, will be the interim EMS division. And so I'll be meeting with our EMS staff on tomorrow morning to convey that. Any questions or things about that? Our EDC director, I'll be talking to you hopefully later this evening and bringing a recommendation to you so we can move forward with that position. Public utilities is actually an interesting one. We have interviewed some candidates. We actually have some of our internal, one of our internal employees who has now achieved the certification that will allow them to move up into one of the positions that we have available, which is director and assistant director. And so we're very close to going ahead and getting those positions filled. But I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that we were working on that and are at the point where we can go ahead and get those positions filled as well. And our deputy clerk position, we have been able to interview for that position. And happy to say that we did offer to one candidate who ultimately wasn't able to accept it. But we have found one of our existing employees who we But we have uh, found one of our existing employees uh, who we have offered to, and we hope to have them onboard uh, just as soon as we can get them onboard. I think Ms. Pulley will uh, appreciate, appreciate that. And for soil and water, which was the last one I mentioned, we will just follow the process that the state uh, provides for us to hire the soil and water director. They have their own separate board, and that board will likely hire candidates, and Beverly will assist them as well. Any questions about any of this? So for me, that is a lot of change to the organization. Uh, and, and so part of what we have to do to manage that is how do we work together? And so we have contracted, um, this is an item that I have spoken with you all about. We have contracted with a professional organization that works with local government. They're out of Raleigh, they're called Fountain Works, and they're gonna help us on our professional development as a team. And so all of us who are here today as your professional staff will be included, as well as some of our supervisors. We will gonna, we will be working with them on professional development. We will start with how do we improve collaboration across different areas? So many times you will see similar programs being done by different areas, and we're gonna look at how we can work better as a team to provide service to our residents. Uh, we're gonna look at how do we increase our focus on customer service, whether it's how we work with each other internally and how do we treat our residents when they are trying to access our services? And then um, later on, we'll be talking to you about your strategic plan. We'll also be talking about how do we get on the same page about what it is we're supposed to be doing as an organization to make sure we provide our residents with a high quality of service that they um can trust that we are doing what they are asking us to do as stewards of their tax dollars. So I am excited about that, that is an accomplishment for us. We are an organization in change, and we're gonna have to closely monitor how bringing different people into the organization and watching these people exit the organization to make sure um, we can uh, continue to provide service in that changing environment. All right, one additional item I did want to speak to you about is, you know, we have identified some savings in our budget from the coronavirus relief funds. We are using those savings to cover, for example, the, the hazard pay that we offer to employees. Um, one of the things that will help us, and we've talked about it for the past couple of years, is a building assessment. We have um, an RFP draft that we are looking at, and we're gonna go ahead and get quotes so we can get that project started this year. So the product that we will have in our next fiscal year will be an outlining of all the spaces that we have. Is it appropriate for the level of service that we're providing and the employees that we have? And what do we need to do to go forward? Can we repair, remodel some existing space? Or do we need to look at consolidating in one space and, and what that looks like? So it's the facilities needs and space assessment, so we're happy to get that uh, moving forward. So we're gonna try our best to get that uh, agreement in place before the end of this fiscal year, so we can get the results in the next fiscal year. So those are some of the major challenges that we are working on, and specifically, I want to make sure that I have some time to discuss with you those key positions and what we're doing to get those filled. So at this time, I'll stop and see if y'all have any questions. I will take it, uh, but just let me know. If you think of something that we haven't discussed, if you have any questions about any of it, just please reach out, let me know, and I'll be happy to provide you a response. Next item is our strategic plan update. And so you should have before you a draft that we have received back from the consultants that we use with the Hayes Group. And I'm really excited uh, about the strategic plan draft that we have. So I want, I did intend for you to um, go through it in detail this evening, I just wanted to let you know that we have the draft from them. We have put together a team internally to take a look at that strategic plan. And so the next time we bring it back to you, we'll bring it to you in a final form so you all can formally take some action on it. Having that be a part of uh, what we use to guide our operations here in the county. Um, so I'm excited because we already had a mission in place. So based on the work that you all did in February, we also have the draft vision for you all. And we also have some governance areas that we didn't have clearly identified before. And so it shows you the four main areas that we will try to take action to uh, make accomplishments for the county. So I'm excited about that as well. And so uh, now that you all have that draft, if you can take some time to uh, review it and let us know if you have any concerns or ideas, we can include that in it, so when we bring it back to you, it'll be in the final form that we can prove and move forward. All right. With that said, that concludes my comment.
It sounds good, Mr. Jones, appreciate it. Um, we're gonna move right to item number seven. And the county manager is asking us to approve and uh, the purchase of a twenty-twenty-one Chevrolet Blazer from Modern Chevrolet for thirty-two uh, seven-seven-five for emergency services through the No Calum insurance association EMS procurement program and two Ford F- one-fifty-four-by-four trucks from Capital Ford incorporated through the No Calum state contract zero-seven uh, seventy-eight and thirty-one thousand uh, five-four-eight for the buildings and grounds and corporate extension. Uh, this is the total amount of purchase of ninety-five thousand eight-seventy-one. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, that is a request from our county manager, and uh, would entertain a motion for approval? Yes. Are you clear on this, ma'am? All right, sir. It's been proper to Matt, uh, excuse me. It's improper motion by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Hunt, that we approve the county's management request for purchase of these vehicles. Is there any discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, motion is carried. Uh, item number eight, and this is update on Tar River Regional, uh, excuse me, Tar River Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan and Resolution Adoption Process. And this is uh, King Krulik.
Right.
Mr. Krulik and Mr. Pascal, if you want to provide some assistance, uh, please feel free. Mr. Pascal's in here, Mr. Pascal's in there. He's had my day. How you doing, Ms. Pascal?
All right. Thank you, good evening, everyone. Can folks hear me? Okay, so this is an update as to the county's part in the Tar River Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, this is nothing new. Uh, in fact, this is probably the second or third segment we're going through with this. So basically, we're in the Tar River, the Tar Panico River Basin. So the counties that are in the area are participating in this. So just a quick overview, what is hazard mitigation? Basically, any sustained action that's taken to reduce or eliminate any type of long-term risk to human life and property from hazards. Those hazards can be any kind of natural hazards or even man-made hazards. This is a continuous and ongoing process, it's actually done both before and after disasters. Next slide. So just a few examples of that hazard mitigation. And one of the things that's most common is elevating floodplains. Uh, also, there's constructions of levees and floodwalls, enhancing and strengthening local building codes, land use planning, and even the construction of safe rooms with regards to tornadoes in certain structures. Next slide. So why are we doing this? It's a long-term goal. Ultimately, it reduces disaster losses, reduces loss of life, reduces damage to property. I, economic impacts and the social impacts on the community. Like anything else, the more we can be proactive and less reactive, the better off we are. So mitigation saves money, for every dollar invested, it'll save six dollars. Mitigation creates safer, more resilient communities. It breaks that cycle of disaster damage, where people are, you know, doing things that are causing the same damage to happen over and over again. It also speeds disaster recovery. And again, why are we doing this? This is required for federal grant eligibility. So basically, for us to be eligible for grant funding from this, the state, we have to have this plan in place. Pre-disaster mitigation is competitive. Uh, we also have flood mitigation assistance. There is the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And this is all something from the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand, or D-Mac, D, DEMA two K. It requires a local plan to be in place for the above programs. It emphasizes a proactive approach to emergency management and prevents damages before the disaster occurs. So a Senate Bill three hundred was passed in June of two thousand and one, and it means the North Carolina Emergency Management Act. It requires local mitigation plans in order to maintain eligibility for public assistance when the state declares disaster. Funded through the Federal Hazard Mitigation Grant Program after Hurricane Matthew, and then North Carolina Emergency Management is managing the grant and providing contractor support. There is no local match required, the state's covering the whole bill. As I said earlier, we're in the Tar River Basin. So those communities and counties that are in that Tar Pan River Basin are part of this whole process, this whole project. It's Franklin County, Bramble, Vance, and of course, Moore County and the jurisdictions within. Here's the planning cycle, started off with public outreach, risk assessment assessments, capability assessments, mitigation strategies, plan maintenance, and we're actually in the tail end of this whole process, going for plan adoption. And that's why we're here tonight with the resolution. So we're in the tail end, as I said, getting close to plan adoption. But that's at the local level, we have to still submit this to the state, and they then to the feds. So the criteria description for the planning, as I said, what are the risks in the area? What mitigation strategies can be put in place to prevent those risks or reduce those risks? The plan maintenance, adoption by local governments, and then of course, that is reviewed by the state and federal government for final adoption. That's kind of hard to see on this particular slide, but the big thing is identifying what are those hazards in the area. Obviously, this is something which is in your packets, but one of the biggest ones we face in North Carolina is flooding from hurricanes. In addition, we have tornadoes, wildfires, and of course, recently, we now have the pandemic. And then, of course, then there's the technological or man-made disasters, which can be those biochemical or radiological issues that come up, cyber tech. And of course, uh, can you go back one, please? Thank you. EMP, which is a big concern with some segments of our society. So, next slide, please. So hazards that we have to address and be aware of within this particular location in the Tar, in the Tar River. Dam failure, drought, extreme heat, earthquake. Who would have thought that we have earthquakes in North Carolina? Uh, flooding, obviously, a big thing, hurricanes and tropical storms, any kind of severe weather, tornadoes. We've had some wildfires here in the county, and of course, winter storms, ice and snow. So these are the hazards that are identified as more the predominant ones here in this area. So the plans are updated every five years. Uh, adopted plan requires eligibility for future funding, so as I said earlier, for us to be able to be eligible for state federal funds, we have to have this plan in place. Each jurisdiction must adopt it. Local plans are submitted to the state hazard mitigation officer for initial review, and then they forward it on to the federal, to FEMA, for final review and approval. And ultimately, this whole process is just as important, if not more so, than the document itself. The state and federal agencies want to be able to see there's been buying and participation by the local government, by the population on these plans, and not just being written by one person and signed and sent in. So again, the process for planning is just as important, if not more so, than the document. Any additions?
Appreciate it, Mr. Carroll. It's approximately eight hundred and some page document. So I encourage you, one day, if you have some time, would like to go through the document. It's a lot of historical data, if you want to see the history native or hurricanes, whatever event, so it's a lot of historical data. Information might be of interest to you. But at the last part of the document, it gets into the Warren County Mitigation Action Plan. There's certain disciplines that we have to address, and one of those is like addressing one of the goals we put in. Again, is finding a, some grant money to put a generator here at this site for continuity of county government. So again, a lot of the deals with Mr. Carroll's office in guarding your land plan and flood plan and stuff like that. And each one of the municipalities also is part of this Warren County Mitigation Play Action Plan. So those documents should be about at the end of eight hundred pages.
So. Thanks, Chair. Cameron, you gonna wrap up?
Uh, no, to wrap up, just uh, basically looking at the adoption of the resolution by this board, supporting adoption of the plan.
So Mr. Krulik and Mr. Pascal have been participating, I want to say, for the last six to nine months.
More like a year.
Almost a year on this process. And so we are now at the end of it, and so as one of the counties in this project, excuse me, process, we are required to adopt this locally. And so you have uh, in front of you an example of a resolution, and we're not asking you to approve tonight, it's just the example. Uh, we'll bring it back to you at your next meeting for you to consider and take action on.
Okay, thanks. Because I think Commissioner Hunt wants to read the eight-hundred-page document before he before we approve this, so uh.
We'll get a box up and send over to you.
Yeah, Commissioner, did you get that down by the next meeting? Okay, okay. Yeah, he says speed we, it's speed read it, okay, okay. Yeah, uh, thank you, gentlemen, for your efforts in this. Uh, it sounds like it's been a long process, but well worth it uh, uh, being engaged. Ladies and gentlemen, the board, give me any questions for these gentlemen before we uh, move to the next process of this. Okay. Uh, without objection, I, I would.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, gentlemen. Uh, without objections, I think that uh, if you, with your consideration, if we move this for approval at our next board meeting agenda. All right, thanks again. All right, um, ladies and gentlemen of the board, uh, and including you, uh, the administrative staff, we are getting ready to address item number nine, which is closed session. But before we do that, is there any other business that need to be considered before we do that? Okay, well, ladies and gentlemen of the board, um, the board would entertain a, a motion to go into closed session according with uh, NCGS one-four-three-three-one-eight, one-eleven-eight-three-and-six for attorney-client privilege and personnel reasons. It's improper motion by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Hunt, that we go into closed session according with his ministry presented. Is there any discussion before we um, take a vote? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, motion is carried, we hear about it in closed session, thank you. Are we, we're leaving from here, right?
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the board entertain a motion that we return from closed session.
Mood that we return to open session?
It's been properly motion by Commissioner Piers, second by Commissioner Baker, that we return from closed session to open session. Is there any discussion on the favor side? Posnae, motion is carried, we go back to an open session. Ladies and gentlemen, the board to board entertain a motion that we add an agenda item 9A to consider appointment of the... This says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's hear it.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the board entertain a motion that we return from closed session to open session. Is there any further discussion? Here none, all the favors are aye. Posnae, motion is carried, ladies and gentlemen, the board now we're going to address 9A, which is the board would entertain a motion to approve by the county manager's recommendation to appoint Ms. Charlotte Duncan as EDC executive director at a degree of 29 and a salary of $7,500 annually.
Let's hear it. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the board entertain a motion that we approve the recommendation as stated.
It's been proper motion by Commissioner Hunt, second by Commissioner Baker, that we approve the recommendation as stated and presented. Is there any further discussion? Here none, all the favors are aye. Posnae, motion is carried. For the record, I believe that is... That commences today, correct?
Today.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, look forward to working with you in that position.
Thank you, Vincent, for knowing what's important to me. I just want to say to y'all, thank you for the faith that you have had in me the last several months, having me. And also, just in general, when Vincent brought me on back in December of 2019, it's been such an honor to serve my home community, so I appreciate you having the faith in me to bring that in. And I think, I was trying to think back, I don't know when, if ever, you've had someone in this role who's from here, born and raised. So I take that as a challenge.
Let's chair, move that we approve the recommendation as stated.
It's been properly motion by Commissioner Hunter, second by Commissioner Baker, that we return from closed session to open session. So any discussion on the favor side?
Aye.
Motion made, motion is carried, we are back in open session. Ladies and gentlemen, the board, the board entertain a motion that we add an agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the executive director. Is there any discussion here now, all the favors aye?
Aye.
Motion made, motion is carried. Ladies and gentlemen, the board, now we are going to address nine A, which is the board would entertain a motion to approve by the county manager's recommendation to appoint Ms. Charlotte Duncan as EDC executive director at a degree of twenty-nine and a salary of seven five hundred annually.
Let's chair, move that we approve the recommendation as stated.
It's been properly motion by Commissioner Hunter, second by Commissioner Baker, that we return from closed session to open session. So any discussion on the favor side?
Aye.
Motion made, motion is carried, we are back in open session. Ladies and gentlemen, the board, the board entertain a motion that we add an agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the executive director. Is there any discussion here now, all the favors aye?
Aye.
Motion made, motion is carried. Ladies and gentlemen, the board, now we are going to address nine A, which is the board would entertain a motion to approve by the county manager's recommendation to appoint Ms. Charlotte Duncan as EDC executive director at a degree of twenty-nine and a salary of seven five hundred annually.
Let's chair, move that we approve the recommendation as stated.
It's been properly motion by Commissioner Hunter, second by Commissioner Baker, that we return from closed session to open session. So any discussion on the favor side?
Aye.
Motion made, motion is carried, we are back in open session. Ladies and gentlemen, the board, the board entertain a motion that we add an agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.
All right, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, it's like my Commissioner Hunt, that we add agenda item nine A to consider appointment of the, this says executive director. Okay. Okay, thank you, executive director of EDC.
Let's chair. Oh, second.